I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 3rd. If we will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And again, I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if I would, a few moments of silence for Lee Meade, Wayman Rodriguez, and Senator Diane Feinstein. What's his first name?
Derek.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Derek Quezenberry. Please be seated. And when you're ready, the real call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Protan Ponte.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Lavelle is absent, and City Attorney Scott Campbell is joining us by Zoom.
Okay, welcome, Scott. Are there any announcements or written communications?
There are no announcements, but we have two written communications we received regarding item number 11. Both written communications oppose the item, and we have one written communication regarding the Catalina Island Conservancy proposed restoration plan. That communication is in opposition of their plan.
Okay, thank you. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. Three items tonight. So we have power outage because of the work that SCE has been doing. It's thankful that they're replacing the poles up there, so it's great to see that new infrastructure. But due to the upgrades with the SCE equipment, there's been, you know, power shutdowns at the mole, which probably experienced that was for a day. And Edison had provided a generator for backup power, and that was great, and that worked out fine. And then at Pebley Beach Lift Station, we have really an extended duration outage at six days there, you know, for them to be able to get that work done. So it's testing our backup power for a few days. We were just on our own. And then SCE, they had a generator available for the backup power. So, you know, we've got about three levels of redundancy. We've got our own generator, we've got our bypass pump, and we have also SCE. So, but it's good to test our equipment at that, so if we have an extended duration outage, we know what we would have to do. And it also leads us into, you know, do we have enough equipment on the island? Because it takes a while to get that transported over here, so we're keeping our eye on that. Benita Way Stairway, I know this has been a topic discussion for many years, and then also it's in the capital budget. But work will begin on that upper section this month, you know, so that first two sets of stairs up there, so not the whole stairway. But as you come down from East Whitley, and before you turn the corner down to go to Whitley, we'll be replacing that set of stairs with our own crew and working with Edison. And then there's a homeowner that also wants to waterproof their house, so that'll be the first take at that. So it'll take about three weeks to get that work done. And mainly it impacts the top residents up there because the lower residents can come up the stairway. And there'll be more to come on that as we get specific details of the exact timing on that, but we'll be working with those area residents. And then 206 East Whitley, we're scheduled to begin this month with Jorodol Construction on that retaining wall project that you approved. And so that'll be the retaining wall and the fringe improvements there at 206 East Whitley gets that project going. And there'll be more to come as we get specific details on that, and we'll be working with all the area residents and the community on that. Any questions?
Yeah. Is there any way that you can, that we can start renovating the existing building while we're waiting for the retaining wall?
So we have plans for the renovation. They're at 98%. And we are looking at ways to put out that work and so that we get a fair price on it. But yeah, you're right. We need to do something with that. So I'm working with city manager on what our direction is as we move forward with the retaining wall project. And then as we get a certain amount of the way, we'd be ready to start on that one.
Yeah.
More to come on it.
I'm just hoping to see work going on inside the building while there's stuff going on outside the building. Let's just get this project going.
Okay, more to come on that.
Okay.
My next question is, are we still considering looking into the erosion hillside walls or netting? For like Pebley as well as the Benita Way hillsides?
I'm not, I'm not clear in the question, so.
Are we still looking at the erosion netting? I'm trying to get it for those hillsides.
Like the expanding ring bet, ring net barriers, those kind of things?
Oh, yes, yes.
Instead of the K rail and the fence?
Yeah, so you're, yeah, like in many of our state highways around here, we have the chain link or higher grade fabric that goes on there. We actually have a project designed for Pebley Beach Road that we could look at some pricing on. And I think it would probably come in phases because we'll see a big dollar amount on that. But there's a couple of critical areas that, especially by the mole, and then there's an area in that straight stretch, if that's the one you're referring to, on Pebley Beach Road.
Yes.
And then, of course, Casino Way has the same types of issues, not as prevalent as that straight section, though. So we could do that. We could make some efforts on that.
And that's Island Company hillside?
Yeah, and that is Island Company's hillside, too. We have a maintenance agreement on Pebley Beach Road with the Island Company. But that whole hillside up above is their maintenance responsibility, so we, whatever best way we can get that done for the community, you know, and that's what public-private partnerships help with.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. We've had a couple of close calls over there.
Yes, we have.
Better get it done before something crucial happens. Thank you, Bob.
And then for the questions of Bob, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Good evening, everyone. Orin Karstafen, Harbor Master. The California Spawny Lobster Fishery opened on Friday, September 29th at 6:00 PM for recreational diving and hoop netting. This brought out a number of boaters and fishermen to try their luck catching the elusive creatures. The commercial fishery opens tomorrow, Wednesday, October 4th. Since my last report, Tuesday, September 5th, patrol moored 1,856 boats for a total of 6,446 nights, which is up from August. Patrol responded to seven medical calls. Two were listed as minor. Patrol did 110 public assists that ranged from wrap-ups to assistance towing. Patrol assisted Coast Guard three times. Patrol wrote one citation for AMC 10-2503I, Discharge of Green Die. Harbor warned or advised 35 individuals of municipal code violations and completed 204 security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters. For the mole facility, patrol reported 116 warnings or advisements of municipal code violations, five parking citations, 329 traffic contacts, 33 security rounds, and 15 crane assist, AKA boat launch. Thank you.
How many boat mechanics do we have in Avalon?
That's a tricky question. We have Desi that shows up on the weekends, and he tries to help boaters. He's usually here on the weekends, and then if it's during the week, then he'll try to help them via FaceTime. But generally, it's hard to find a mechanic in Avalon. A marine mechanic. You can call the Avalon Boat Stand and get outboard repair, but that's generally limited to Yamaha or E-Tech outboards.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you, Orin.
How are you doing, Matt?
Doing well, thank you, ma'am. I just got back yesterday from knee surgery. It was orthoscopic, wasn't too bad, so I can still walk. Flexibility's not great, but it's getting better, so hopefully I'll be 99% in a month or so. We'll see.
Great, okay.
Doctor says it's a good chance of getting back to pretty much normal, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Took me three years to get the surgeries, I'm very excited.
Exactly.
So since our last council meeting, the sheriffs went on 270, I'm sorry, 287 calls for service. Of those, 179 were self-initiated by the deputies, and 108 were calls from service from the public. We made three arrests for drunken public, one arrest for assault on one of our deputies, and one arrest for domestic violence. We wrote eight citations, traffic citations during that time. Well, the numbers, we've kind of bumped up our enforcement along, Emily Canyon here with the school back in, and we're talking to the school and having meetings with them, kind of trying to get them to understand the helmet laws and stop signs and driving with a license and all that kind of fun stuff. The kids tend not to worry about too much. We're also dealing a lot with golf carts being taken by people they don't belong to, and we're dealing with the school with that as well. That's something we're trying to get out there and explain to them how important it is that they're not taking golf carts. The unfortunate thing we're having, for anyone listening, please understand that it's best to take your key out of the ignition, and if your cart's getting stolen even with the key gone, because we all know that an old cart, you can put any key into it and turn it, it'll start most of the time. You can put some kind of theft device on it, it would be great. That way, you know, it won't be taken, you know, by anybody and lost for a period of time. The big concern is that unlicensed drivers are out there, and they're crashing into people. And we recently had some use in a golf cart that were chased down by the owner, went around the owner, ended up hitting somebody else, and injuring, not really injuring, but really damaging the car.
And what can you do about that?
Well, this individual left the key in the ignition, so best thing to do would not to leave the key in the ignition.
But I mean, the kids created all that havoc, and so what is their punishment, or what's the consequence for what they did?
It's written up in a crime report, and it's sent to the DA. And what I plan to do is just like last year, doing a shortstop program with them. That's going to happen hopefully again in the spring. I spoke to the school, and they're excited to do it, and so am I, so that's the plan. I'm kind of hoping that we could do more intervention before that, kind of the same group before they get here, because I think the three weeks really isn't enough.
Yeah.
But if we can kind of meet with them and kind of try to get some of these issues taken care of before we even start the program, it'd be fantastic.
I, it would be, yeah, yeah. Any questions?
I do. For the domestic violence cases, do we have resources available for them at the station?
We actually refer them to, I believe it's, I'm sorry, it's La Casa at Long Beach, and that's who we kind of give them some material. That's not at the station, but typically it's, we give it to them around the field there, and there's a victim of domestic violence, we let them know about it, and we advise them to make that call.
Okay.
Isn't there, isn't the Women's Forum supposed to be involved with that? So we don't have a...
They're not partnered with Sucas anymore, but they do have their information still. And I know that they have, like, finances available if they happen to need to get a boat, ticket over, or shelter. I can share that with you in an email.
And we have some funds as well that we use for transporting people over that need to be transported. We haven't really had an issue with, if someone needs to go, we find a way and we get them over. That's kind of one of those things where, I mean, we have a little bit of station fund, and if someone needs resources, such as homeless outreach or those kind of issues or drug treatment, we always find a way to get people over. That hasn't really been a huge issue, but it's a great, it's great to know that. And if you could forward me some information, that'd be great. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Here comes Matt Baker.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. I wanted to provide a quick update on TOT, our visitor-driven revenues in general, for the month of August. TOT was down 15% for August. Again, we had that storm that didn't help the numbers there, but we're still on track to meet our budget estimate. So from a budget standpoint, it really shouldn't have any impact on the year. July ended up being down 4%. I think I previously reported around 8%, but we had some late reporters. So even that August 15 could still improve, but given how many have paid timely, I don't think it'll change too much from that number. Similarly, ad tax currently is down about 25%, but there's a couple larger payers. I think it's going to be down around 15%, similar to TOT for the month of August. Some positive news, while the nightly moorings in the harbor are down 8% in August, they were up 22% in September. Some of that benefit is because we had some unseasonable weather last September. But the September figure is still higher than September 2020 and '21, which are our best Septembers on record for the harbor. So nightly moorings is definitely a positive, so hopefully that is shared with some of the other visitor-driven revenues in September. Other than that, in finance, we are working on implementing a new payroll software. So council might notice some slight changes to the look and feel of our kind of HR payroll software. I just want to recognize Diana Rios and Stephanie Campbell. They've been, I couldn't do it without them. They've been instrumental in getting us, getting this project over the line.
On that regard, though, I'd like to say I love getting my paper check, and all I have to do is open the envelope and tear it instead of folding it here and folding it there and folding it there and ripping the account number off the bottom, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
It's good to hear. We also can do direct deposit, though, Annie, so.
And I don't have that money. I don't have those $77 in my hot little hand, you know?
I completely understand. And then, lastly, we do have auditors coming onsite at the end of this month, so my team's working hard to make sure the 23 financials are ready for them when they're here. So if you see some strange faces at the end of the month in finance, it's probably our auditors, so. With that, any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
When we talk about visitors count, we say a million visitors a year. Does that include our boaters that come over on their own boats and things like that?
I believe yes. I think that is factored in.
Okay.
Good evening, council, Mayor. Couple things. Our popular senior program, Aqua Aerobics, has been extended until November. So those are Fridays and Fridays at 8:00 AM up at the Catalina Canyon Inn. And we'd like to thank Nicole for allowing us to extend this really popular program for our seniors. For our youth, we had flag football started this last weekend, and our Avalon Youth Volleyball has been going in full swing for a week and a half. With the NFL flag, one of the cool things is the LA Rams sent us a big box of gear, hats, shirts, towels, pins, wide receiver gloves for all the kids who are playing football. So every kid got some sort of Rams gear, kind of a way to say thank you for playing and representing, and they'll be out in April. With the flag football, the kids, we have 50 kids participating in that one. And in Avalon Youth Volleyball, we have 70 kids participating in that. We only have, I think, five kids that are crossing over playing both sports. So that means we're about 130 kids participating in our sports programs from third through eighth grade, which is probably around 60 to 70% of the kids. So we're excited about that. This weekend, event-wise, we have the Avalon Rotary. We'll be having their biggest fundraiser on South Beach this Saturday, October 7th, the Chili Cook-Off. Prices and everything, we can, we'll probably hear a little bit more from our Rotary member at the dais. But the doors will be open at 1:00 PM, and will go till 5:00 PM. We want to make sure you all come out and enjoy some of the best homemade chili you've ever tasted. Signups have started for the Fall Carnival on October 20th. Sign up for the booth, sign up for a booth with Marissa at City Hall. This year, performing on stage will be the mariachi artist Fernando Gonzalez, who will be using it as a way to start his mariachi classes that he will run through the city, teaching mariachi music. And Dance Tech, the dance school that will be starting in January, will also be there, performing live with many of their students from over town, kind of giving us a highlight of what is coming to Avalon. But besides the two classes, we have, we have a fire breather coming, fire dancer, fire eater, Faith of Fire. I'm not sure exactly what her full, there's just a lot of fire.
That's Captain Allegria, Chief Allegria.
And then we also have Brandon the Magician, who will be coming and doing a couple spot acts throughout the whole program that night. So I think the entertainment will be full and fun. So come on down, play fun carnival games, get your pumpkins at the pumpkin, pictures in the pumpkin patch, and some of the local cuisine from the fourth hole, AKA vergies. Did you have any questions for me?
Thank you. That's good. Awesome. Assistant City Manager.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Last month, the community survey closed with 632 surveys. 201 were received in the mail, 161 online, and 270 in person. So Xylo did great, our volunteers did great, and I really appreciate all the participation from our community. At the next council meeting, we'll present on the final report and the findings for the community survey. This week, the city mailed notices to all food service establishments regarding the city's fats, oils, and grease program, AKA FOG, as well as information on the city's recycling and food diversion programs. This fall, the city's contractor, John Kinley with ECIS, will start working with city staff in each food service facility to ensure compliance with the city's FOG program. This will include inspecting kitchen equipment, maintenance procedures, and staff training. I left some extra copies of the notices in the back as reference. And if anybody wants to view FOG training materials, videos in English and in Spanish, the manual, and just other information related to the FOG program, you can go to cityofavalon.com/fog. That's F-O-G. Or if you prefer, you can email fog@cityofavalon.com. And then finally, next week, the city's environmental consultant, Geologic, will be on island to continue their work on the environmental studies for the Pebley Beach landfill vertical extension project. The initial pre-application for the project has been submitted to Los Angeles County Regional Planning. And that concludes my update.
Any questions? Thank you. City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, council, residents. Good evening. Couple things, just a reminder, DMV will be at City Hall next week. The schedule, they'll arrive Monday, so most of Monday morning they'll be setting up. So their hours of operation are Monday, 1:00 to 5:00, Tuesday, Wednesday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then Thursday, 8:00 AM to 11:30, and then they'll be off island. So two full days, two half-days. They will get you in if you're walking. The signups have been going on all week, but if you have not signed up, do not put it off. Go ahead and walk in. They do a great job of getting everybody in here, so we're looking forward to that. We'll be busy next week. Just wanted to put out there that we have a couple employment opportunities for the city that are out there. We're looking for a full-time equipment mechanic with our Public Works Department. We're looking for a part-time recreation coordinator. And we're always in the market for additional maintenance workers in Public Works. If you're interested, please, you know, online, apply, get in. We are trying to, as the applicants come in, give them opportunity to interview and be heard and present their resume to us. We are, we are trying to get Public Works back up to levels so they can continue to do, do the work that we're all expecting them. They do a great job with what they have, but they're still understaffed. So if you know of anybody out there, please, please call City Hall. And then finally, since the chief's not here, he's over town, just want to put out there that the Fire Department will be hosting the October Chamber Mixer like they did last year. So that's going to be October 19th over in the Fire Department. They're excited to cook, clean everything up, and I'm sure they'll be giving rides again in the old fire truck. So that's October 19, Chamber Mixer, 6:00 PM at the Fire Department.
And I have a question. I don't know if you're getting any applications for mechanics, but is there any way we might consider some kind of an internship where we pay them less, but get them, try to get them? Because the kids here don't have the opportunity to even, to even have, they've not been exposed to anything. But I know one kid in particular said, he ran into somebody who lives in Utah, and he said, "Come to Utah, and I'll teach you how to be a mechanic," you know, so I don't know if we, if that's...
We have two terrific mechanics right now. They would love the extra hands. They would love the help, and they would love to teach. So if we find the right fit, we'll make it work. If somebody wants to get involved, yes, absolutely, apply and see if it, see if it'll work.
Could we partner with the school on this? I know a lot of the high school kids, it's like a work program, and you have to sign off hours or volunteer hours. And I, don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure they have an open period to get those hours done. So if that is the case, if someone's interested, could we have them go out there, get those hours and help?
But they need more than one hour.
No, they have a certain amount of hours they have to complete.
Total hours. Okay, okay.
I think if they have some basic skills, oil change, brakes, reviewing things, we can talk about it. Really, what our goal is, is to get somebody to rise to the level that they can be an additional full-time mechanic with all our equipment, through the Fire Department, Public Works, and then the Marine, the Harbor Department, which is a little more unique from a mechanic standpoint. We're really trying to get somebody in to take on that full-time role. So hopefully, it'd be a candidate that has the time to devote full-time hours. But we wouldn't close off any possibility.
And we might want to talk to Long Beach City because they have a lot of those kind of programs where it's a day in the classroom and then four days hands-on somewhere. So I don't know, it might not hurt to call Long Beach City, too.
I can double-check with Herlindo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good idea, yeah.
City Attorney.
Nothing to report, other than it was nice to see all of you in Sacramento last week.
Yeah.
The ghosts of us.
It was very good.
It was really sad.
Okay, council member reports.
I can go first.
Sure.
Well, as Scott just mentioned, you guys enjoyed the convention. I did not. My kids ended up getting a little too sick, and so I stayed behind. But with that being said, there is an opportunity for me to make it back up to Sacramento next month, since I missed out. It is the California Democratic Convention. I did get invited by Josh Lonthal's office, so I'm in the works of trying to make that happen and lining up some babysitters. Mom, if you hear this, please help me. And then another thing, myself, Yoli, I believe she's here tonight, and Jim is usually here from Love Catalina. We partnered up with another Yolanda. She's Yolanda Van Dyke. She's the executive director for Susan G. Komen for the Breast Cancer Awareness, because this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Up in LA, they're doing a walk October 29th, and we'd like to partake on that as well, but do our own event here on the island. We are still working through the details, but as soon as we get those down, because we're meeting this Thursday, and once we get everything ironed out, we'll start getting the information out so we can all attend. I know a lot of people here on the island are affected by it. I know Yoli herself has her own experience and story as well. So as long as we can shed as much light as possible, get as much information out as possible, and fundraise as well.
Great.
Cool.
Great.
Okay. Not much. Rotary Chili Cook-Off this was weekend. It is $25 for adults. I don't have the cost for the kids, but there is a discounted price for kids. But it's a lot of fun. It's great chili, and...
Yes, I'm obscene.
She's obscene.
Are you pointing at me? Yes.
And Mayor will be obscene.
Well, and we will be judging.
You're not supposed to know who's judging.
Oh. They didn't, they didn't tell me that.
Not until after you're done.
I guess I'll wear a disguise. Maybe I, oh, damn.
Who's the band? Is the band a secret, too?
I'm not sure who the band is.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't part of that. But please come on down and enjoy yourselves. It's going to be a nice weekend. I was kind of hoping it was going to be like last week in a little pool. I guess it's going to be a little hot. And then it was a great experience, it always is, to go and network with our co-council people with the rest of the state. It's nice sometimes to hear how some cities have really, really, really bad issues going on, and to hear how well a lot of stuff that we do here is possible. But it's, it's good to get feedback about large cities and small cities. But it's, it's a great experience, it's great learning. Had a great presentation, the last one that I attended, in regards to information coming from the city out of the community. And it was how, how we make communication in this new era of this and this more personable. And it was great. And pass it on to Dave, he was gonna look at Carl Spence's media piece. Just, it, it's letting people know exactly what's going on. My favorite part of it was to take a stat report and make it readable for everyone. So that when you're reading and you understand what is actually going on in it, not all the legal jargon that's in it. So it was, it was, so I'm sorry, I think you guys are right at the airport, but that's where I was.
It's all good. It's all good. Um, so, speaking of that kind of a situation, I got caught in the, I'm getting close to running out of gas, so I went to the gas station, and there's a sign on it that says, "No electricity, no gas." But, you know, we'll be here tomorrow. So then I go back out the next day, and they're closed, no gas. I, you know, I'm just like, oh, so that's twice, you know? But then it's like, somebody goes, "Well, it's all over Facebook." Well, great, I just don't go on Facebook a lot. So, that kind of, it would be nice to figure out how to disseminate information without having to depend on just Facebook, or, because we worry about it all the time, we talk about it all the time, well, nobody reads the paper. A lot of people don't have Channel Three. Uh, you only go to Vons so often and see the rolling thing on TV. So how do we accomplish it? So, I hope you got some, some good ideas out of that, because that would be very, very useful. So, yeah, the, um, the convention was awesome, and one of the seminars that I attended, get ready Avalon, hold on to your hats, I'm going there. But it's all about, everybody says, you know, especially with the transient rentals being on moratorium right now, everybody's like, "But you need that TOT, you're dependent on that TOT." And so, there is a way to reduce the dependency on TOT, and that is if we get a storefront dispensary for recreational and medical marijuana. A lot of cities on the mainland have pulled themselves completely out of bankruptcy by opening dispensaries. The money can be funneled into cities' general funds, it can also be funneled into educational purposes, where you educate the kids. And in, in the city of Santa Ana, they would have classes and training and stuff like that, and the kids eventually grew up to work in dispensaries. And a lot of cities say that it cuts down on the illegal sale of marijuana. But, so I just know that there's gonna be lots of dialogue happening. This isn't gonna happen right away, this is one of my goals, though. I really think it would be good for this town, money, fiscally, I think it would be really, really good. But we do have to work out the situation with International Waters and getting it over here, and I'm, I'm working on that. The Chili Cook-Off is always a blast, and it is kind of fun to be eating, you know, spicy chili in the hot sun, but don't worry, they've got plenty of beer and margaritas, so that works out, and the band is usually really, really fun. And, um, looking forward to Fall Fest, and I think that's about it. I know that a lot of community members have reached out to us about the conservancy's plan. And to those people that, I mean, there was a lot, and I, so I just didn't respond to everyone, but to those people, it is a conservancy thing. So, I really don't see that we have any power to do anything with that. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we feel your pain, we feel the town's pain, definitely. So we'll just see how the, the conservancy decides to move forward with that.
Uh, I just want to make sure, comment on that as well. I, it is a lot, a lot. So it is hard to reply to everything, but one thing that I have been making sure is checking to see who's included in the emails, and if anybody's missing, to just forward it, so everybody gets, you know, the opportunity to see everyone's concern.
Oh, true. Yeah, yeah. And I think it's pretty much going to all of us, but, yeah. And along that line, Los Angeles Times put out an, an extensive article, but a lot of people don't get the LA Times, so you have to pay the dollar or get somebody to forward it to you, but it's very extensive, so, okay.
And if I could, just briefly, as long as you brought it up, I have invited the conservancy to come to an upcoming council meeting. I gave them the date, the next three, and asked them to come, and we'll get them on the agenda to present to council and also present to the residents their restoration plan. And I think, hopefully, they'll take me up on it, and as soon as that comes out, we'll get that posted.
Yeah, I think our residents should know that even though we may not have that sort of jurisdiction, they're still our residents, and we still are advocating for them to be heard.
Absolutely. Yes, that's very well said. Absolutely. So to that end, when that meeting happens, would the public be able to comment or ask questions after the conservancy's presentation, or is it just a presentation?
It's gonna be a presentation, but the conservancy did say that they're planning on, they will have open forums where there will be back and forth.
Okay. All right.
And again, I've made council chambers available to them if they choose to use this forum.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Assistant City Manager and I are going to, to Los Angeles at the Getty House, and to honor Nancy Pelosi, so we'll be doing that and then coming back, and Karen Bass invited us, because that's her residence, Mayor Bass. Nice, I know. So, we're gonna do that. The League Conference was great, I went to a couple of them about, about law enforcement, which was interesting, and there might be a couple of things I want to share with, with the captain at some point that I thought was, would be valuable for the city of Avalon. And some of them, we all kind of sat on some of the same ones as well, but good conference. Okay. Oral Communication, this is an opportunity for people in, in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda, you will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken. Oh, and here's Paul.
Hello there, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Uh, just really quickly, the library's October schedule is out. I've got a lot of good stuff coming up this month. Uh, on October eighteenth, uh, actually the nineteenth, Thursday, the nineteenth, I'm inviting a manga artist out. He's going to offer a little class on drawing manga cartoons. Uh, I know there are a lot, from my own experience at the library, there are a lot of teens and kids who are really interested in cartooning and animation. I'm really strongly advising people to come out to this one. Uh, I had him out before, I had him out in like November, and it was the weekend of a massive storm, and he came out and he did this terrific lecture, and no one came, because everybody didn't want to leave their, their, you know, their house and float away. So I'm bringing him out again. It was an awesome lecture, please come, that's going to be on Thursday, the nineteenth, Think It To Ink It, Manga Madness, really good program. Uh, I also am going to have a magician coming on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, he's a mind-reading magician, so keep your dark secrets at home that day. But, you know, it's mainly for kids, and, you know, we'll learn about who steals cookies and things like that, so no problem. Continuing, um, so those two programs are of course sponsored by our Friends of the Library Group, thank you very much. We're very, all of these programs are not nothing, they're not for nothing, so without the support of our Friends Group, I don't know how we'd bring them out, so it's really kind of them. Uh, other programs I'm still doing, Smarty Pants Storytime every Saturday morning at eleven. Uh, I'm still doing our Creation Station, I've put a name to it, that's our craft on Tuesday afternoon and Friday afternoon. Um, doing games every Wednesday on, at four o'clock. I'm gonna try and put in a chess club, because I've had a lot of young people who want to learn chess. Uh, for grownups, Chuck Liddell is still doing our folksy history talks, the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, they are really interesting. He's, he's starting to get a little scandalous up there. Uh, I think it's just he's at, at that time of his life where he really doesn't, oh, that was two minutes already, super quick. Uh, I've, I've started a, an adult coloring program Tuesday afternoon, mainly, I mean it for the cruise ship people who come on into the library to use their Wi-Fi, I like to have something available for them. Uh, I have an adult craft on Thursday, October twenty-sixth, it's a color scrambled art project, uh, and, um, yeah, that'll do, thank you very much.
Excellent, thanks, Paul. There are a lot going on in that little library. No one, no one else? Okay, I have a proclamation to read. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon recognizing October as Blindness Awareness Month, whereas blindness and vision impairment affects many people all around the world, the World Health Organization estimates there are over two hundred and eighty-five million visually impaired people, two hundred and forty-five million with low vision, and thirty-nine million completely blind people. And whereas vision impairments and blindness have many causes, one of the major causes of blindness is uncorrected refractive errors that leads to blurred vision, leaving people unable to clearly see images through the retina. That's kind of where I am right now, I think. By age sixty-five and over, over ninety percent of people will develop cataracts. Furthermore, between the ages of seventy-five and eighty-five, nearly fifty percent of people will have lost some vision due to a cataract. In the United States alone, every ten million people suffer from retinal diseases that deteriorate peripheral and night vision. And whereas visual impairment is a spectrum that ranges from low to severe in impact, it is primarily an age-related condition that cannot be remedied by prescription glasses or medicine, contacts, or surgery. Those who are legally blind may still have some limited vision in one of both of their eyes. Those who are completely blind need the assistance of Braille Audio Communications or perhaps the services of a C and I dog to help them with their day-to-day tasks. And whereas blind and visually impaired individuals can lead normal lives, they travel, attend schools, seek careers, volunteer, have families, ride public transit, transit, and communicate just like everyone else. Although they might be able to do these things, this community relies on special tools and resources that help them cope with the limited or no vision. And whereas Blindness Awareness Month is important as it gives the blind and visually impaired a voice and an opportunity for telling their own stories. Hopefully, with bringing a spotlight to this community, society as a whole can become more informed about blindness and help others overcome the stigma of their disabilities. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Avalon do hereby declare October twenty-twenty-three as Blindness Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to better understand what it might be like every day for residents on Catalina with blindness or vision impairment, and how we can improve our town to meet their needs, dated this third day of October, Avalon City Council. Consent Calendar.
Thank you. First item on Consent Calendar is approval of the minutes from September fifth, twenty-twenty-three regular council meeting, and the September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three special city council meeting. Approve, item two, approve total expenditures for August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three through September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three totaling two million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Item three, findings to continue to hold remote teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill three-six-one. Item four, authorize the city manager or his designated solicitor a request for proposal for qualified firms to construct custom-made shade structures along Crescent Avenue. This is capital improvement project number two-zero-six-five-zero-two. Item five, authorize the city manager or his designated solicitor a request for proposal for qualified firms to replace the roof of the Harbor Master Building. And item six, village, uh, I'm sorry, vehicle usage policy, and this is just a, adopt the updates of the vehicle usage policy, these were minor updates as recommended by Sira, our insurance provider. And then, item number seven, approve a one-year extension with Open Gov, Inc. for its budget preparation transparency, transparency modules for not to exceed amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Oh, I just have one question on number five, on the, the roof replacement for the Harbor Department?
Yes.
Is there a thought about solar on the top of that, or solar and the, and the ocean don't mix, or what?
Solar, separate from the roof?
After the roof is done.
Uh, that's something we could certainly discuss. I mean, right now, we're in a, we're in a position, if, if you look at the roof of the Harbor Master Office over the years, I don't know how many items are nailed, screwed, or attached to the roof of that building, but it's a lot. And what we're trying to do, we've had leaks in there, and we put this off over a year, so, um, our goal is to get that roof replaced, but I certainly think that we'd be open to having a conversation about, you know, solar in the future, but we have to get the roof replaced before the rains come.
Okay.
Good idea.
What are your thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve item twenty-second.
Second. You figure out who got, who got in there, Dylan.
Oh, Mary, go for it.
Sorry. Alrighty, there's been a motion, a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Lavelle.
General Business, item number eight, we have before you is a, an extension, and we're seeking approval of this extension of the Public Trash Collection and Maintenance Service Agreement with Aladdin Carpet Cleaning and Janitorial through March first, twenty-twenty-four, and authorize the city staff to publish a request for proposal for professional trash collection and maintenance services. So essentially what this is, is seeking that, that extension to give us some time, and we've, we've had a chance to talk to Eddie about that, that we'll be going out, and we certainly expect him to bid on that argument.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve extending the Public Trash Collection and Maintenance Services Agreement with Aladdin Carpet Cleaning and Janitorial through March first, twenty-twenty-four, and authorize city staff to publish a request for proposal for professional public trash collection and maintenance services.
Second? I'll second it. Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponte?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Lavelle.
Item number nine, item number nine is a, is a request for council to consider staff recommendations to modify the lease agreement with Catalina Kid Ventures, and authorize the city manager to amend the lease with Catalina Kid Ventures. What the request here is, as council realizes or knows that CKV rents, I'm sorry, Mayor, do you?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Yeah, so you want to, so Mayor's gonna recuse herself on this based upon her relationship with CKV. So, what we have here is I had an opportunity to meet with Judy Greer, and I've had conversations with, in the past, with, with various members of the community, including on, on council, and we took a hard look at this, this lease agreement, and, and CKV really provides a critical need for childcare services in the city for that age of eighteen months to three years that we're just missing here. And in their lease and some other things that have impacted their, their revenue source has made it very, very difficult for them to continue to operate, so we think that we can easily absorb that lease agreement, make it a one-dollar lease agreement, similar to lease agreements that we have with the Mortuary, or Catalina Tourism Authority, or Catalina Island Medical Center, because they fill that critical need in the city. So, the remainder of this lease, and we can look at it again when the lease is up, at the end of it, but the remainder of this lease, we would immediately institute that one-dollar annual rather than the monthly fee.
And that would be it, or they're still paying the property tax?
We don't control that, but we are working with them, with the county to, my hope would be that based upon the lease being a dollar a year, which would be considered nominal, that it's no longer an income-producing property for the city, and it therefore should be tax-exempt, is our argument. So hopefully, that argument is adopted, but, um...
That's the argument.
That's the argument, right?
I like that argument.
So in the meantime, they're responsible, but we are, we would work with them to try to get to that point, and, and we've already gone down this path with them. We're, they're providing documentation for us, and we're assisting them, so we hope we can get there for them.
Great. Okay.
What's your thought, pleasure?
What?
What's your pleasure? Make a motion?
Oh. Yeah. I'll make a motion to consider staff recommendation to modify the lease agreement with Catalina Kid Ventures, authorize the city manager to amend the lease with Catalina Kid Ventures for a dollar, the annual rate of a dollar.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Copy of vote?
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponte? Mayor Pro Tem Ponte.
Aye.
Three ayes, one absent, Councilmember Lavelle, one abstention, Mayor Marshall.
Thank you.
I'll go get it.
Thank you.
That kind of makes me tear up. I'm so, I'm very happy for you, Judy. Having had a daughter and a granddaughter go through C K V, you know, and I know it's tough and it's, it's, it's going to help out the, the single moms and, and even, even the moms and dads, you know. It's gonna, it's gonna help everyone.
Well, thank you. I don't know how to vote, but thank you very much on behalf of the children of Avalon.
Okay, so item H, or item ten is Measure H update. And Matt Baker will present, we're asking council to receive and file the Measure H annual report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So real quick, I don't have a formal presentation prepared, but I wanted to provide just kind of an overview of what's in the staff report. So as outlined in the ballot measure, there's a requirement that we provide to council on an annual basis, an update as far as the amount of funds collected for the special tax as well as funds expended, and then a status of the project update. So we did reach out to Catalina Island Health and they provided an update as to where they're on in the project, which is in the report. But as far as funds collected and expended, what I've reported is from April of twenty-two, when the tax first went into place through June of twenty-three. So it's a little over one fiscal year. Going forward, we'll present it on a fiscal year basis. So from inception to June of twenty-three, we've collected five hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars in cross-channel Measure H tax, an additional two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents from cruise ship, as well as forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and sixty-five cents in the other category. And the reason that's not a fifty cent or a dollar increment is because we do have some late fees, penalties and interest in that total. So the other would include the nightly moorings, the helicopters, as well as late fees, penalties and interest. So the, the total collection from the cross-channel cruise ship and other categories is seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifteen cents. And again, that's a fifteen-month period. The tax is scheduled to increase again in April of twenty-four. Currently, it is one dollar per passenger on the cross-channel one-way and that's going to increase to two dollars per passenger one-way. Similarly, it's going to increase to two dollars per passenger for the cruise ship visitors. The nightly mooring, however, stays that one dollar per night. We did make one reimbursement to the hospital during the fiscal year. It was for a total of four hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and nine cents. Those are also included in the warrant report. So we have made a second payment in August. So in this warrant report, that was as part of this agenda, there was a second payment to the hospital included in there. But during the fiscal year, we made one payment for that four hundred and ninety-six thousand and that was to reimburse for the invoices provided by the hospital for the development of their facility master plan as well as preliminary engineering. So they provide us with the invoices, which I then send over to the city manager's office for his office's review to make sure they're aligned with the requirements of the measure. And then we reimburse the hospital for, for the amount of the support they provide. And so we made one reimbursement to date, or at least as of June thirty, twenty-three. We did have interest income of two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. And we also had administrative costs of one thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Those were for legal fees with B B and K as well as some bank fees in the setup and maintenance of the, the separate account. So with that, that's what I have prepared unless there's any questions. Again, there is an update in the staff report from the hospital on the next steps, but.
Well, and I think for those, it is kind of interesting, their next steps, which are pretty intensive. But one of the last comment was it's going to take about six to nine months to do these steps or more depending on the temperament, personalities, competency and availability of the players. So they still have a long road a ho, but, but they're.
And, and right now, if, if you look at the kind of ins and outs, there's only about two hundred, three hundred thousand in the accounts. So they're going to need to build up that balance to, you know, tackle a lot of the projects. We do expect the number to increase as the rates going up. But, you know, I, I do expect that account balance to be growing in the coming months.
Matt, they mentioned that they're doing the USDA loan application process on the next cycle. When, do we know when the next cycle is?
That I don't know.
I guess it all falls within that six to nine months, I would imagine, statement. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. The final item tonight, we have a permit application that's been submitted on behalf of Icon of Avalon. And at this time, we're asking council to discuss and provide direction to staff regarding this permit request. And if consensus for approval is reached, make the affirmative finding that the criteria set forth in Avalon Municipal Code, section five dash eleven has been met and direct staff to issue the appropriate permit. Or I would add that if, if council believes more information is needed, direct staff to, or the applicant to provide or acquire that additional information to give council the, the ability to make that decision. And the applicant is here in the audience.
Do we want to talk a little bit, or do we want the applicant to come up first? Or there's some other people in the audience as well that I think want to comment?
Well, I, I spoke with the applicant previously.
Yeah, it looks like they're ready to come up. If they want to come up, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think they're bringing it up and you should be able to access it on the, is the remote up there, Scott? Oh, okay.
Right.
Scott, we'll bring it up with it so you can move through this slide deck. Perfect.
Thank you.
I'm really amazed how quick the Spanish translation comes up on my, on my thing.
I know, right?
How, how are we doing? Just a question. How aren't we doing Spanish? Like, do we have a program or?
Through the service, yeah.
Okay, that is so cool.
Okay, so you should have control of that now, Matt, there, Scott, if you have the, the remote.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council and City Staff. Thank you for letting us present our business proposal. This evening, we'll be discussing the Icon of Avalon, which is a E V golf cart rental, sales and service business. First, I would like to introduce our team. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Captain Scott Gorozenko. Own several businesses within Avalon such as Shore Taxi Business, Catalina Jet Ski Rentals Corporation, M N S S, as well as the Endfloat. I've been a resident of Avalon for twelve years and I'm very knowledgeable in the sense of what it takes to be part of the tourist business, okay? So next, I'd like to just introduce Stacy Amorantos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and City Staff. I appreciate this opportunity to present. For those of you who don't know me, I am Stacy Amorantos. I've been on and off the island about ten years now. Keeps pulling me back. Love this community. As some of you know me from Catalina Island Medical Center, I was previously the C N O and C O O and bring a strong administrative background as well as operating in operations. So, thank you.
Good evening, if you can hear me.
Yes.
I represent Icon of the West. And so we are a low-speed vehicle company that was founded in Florida and it's made its way to California.
You might need to speak up just a little bit.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Todd.
Can you hear me? Low-speed vehicle company that's, was founded in Tampa, Florida and made it to California. We opened our west coast dealership here. We pride ourselves on providing low-speed vehicles to mitigate high gas prices and short trips. And our idea is to provide a very affordable product to people that can basically utilize the cart like a vehicle without spending the money for maintenance and, and gas. And so we have a plant in Goodyear, Arizona, which is the former B two bomber plant. And we operate a huge facility here. We've maintained four thousand carts on, on hand every month. And we were able to supply parts, supplies, and our supply chain's fine, whereas other cart makers have issues. And so we're one of the fastest-growing low-speed vehicle companies in the United States. And so we're providing the excellent product to these people here and that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Matt, can you hear him back there? Okay. Matt and Matt.
Great, and I'm going to take us through some of our slide decks. And I will just touch on, I do want you guys to notice that beautiful picture I got of the Icon Golf Cart right in front of the casino. So let's just talk a little bit about our business summary. Part of what we want to provide is being electric-only and E V golf cart company is we are here to provide clean, emission-free vehicles. We would like to reduce the noise around home. We are offering the community rentals as well as residents' sales and service. One of the things that we do want to focus on is for our local residents as far as sales. We do want to offer incentives, rebates, and we do want to focus on removing the old carts as a trade-in program for our residents. I know that that's something that the city deals with is the abandoned carts. So we really want to partner with that and help remove some of these old carts. Some of our benefits of having the E V carts to our residents is that we are going to align with the current plans. We have federal, state, county and city plans in order to move towards electric vehicles. We want to reduce emissions. We want to leave behind that smaller carbon footprint for our next generation. More so the purchasing options. Again, we will be working with residents as far as incentive, rebates and financing options. Daily rentals, we do want to provide some for daily rentals. This is a gap in the market here in Avalon. Our carts are usually rented on an hourly basis and no more than two hours. We do want to offer full-day rentals. And so this is something that, you know, we see with wedding parties, corporate events. It's, it's just a gap in our market that we don't offer that to our tourists. And I had this experience that I'm going to mention, my daughter Madison. Recently, she moved. They do not own a golf cart. And so it took about four of us with different golf carts to get her moved. We do offer a utility vehicle for our residents to lease for the day or rent for the day in which you can do big item pickups at the barge. You can move, you can run all your errands. And so that is an option for our local residents as well. Overall, we just want to provide that quieter noise reduction in Avalon. Another gap that we saw in the market as far as ADA compliance is when we have someone that comes to our island that has needs, they have a very limited access to getting around our town. You know, they can rent the golf cart for an hour. Other than that, they're turning it back in. By us providing all-day rentals, our ADA compliant people will be able to get around our town and see all of our sites that we offer. Again, our current plans align with federal, California, L A County and Avalon as outlined in your feasibility study with Avalon on the move. Our business structure, I'm going to have Scott go over business structure and operations. Any questions for me on those previous slides?
Not so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. So yes, our, some of what I'm going to say reiterates what Stacy mentioned, our business structure. We are looking at doing daily rentals and specifically sales of new vehicles. Reiterating on the daily rentals, we are looking at half-day rentals or full-day rentals only, no hourly rentals whatsoever. The local residents need those utility-type carts for not only restaurants, but moving grocery store trips, things like that, large events. We're going to be catering to visitors that need a longer-than-one-day or one-day type of rental. The sales of the electric golf carts, we are looking at getting a trade-in of gas-powered carts and disposal of the products off-island. This aligns with the City of Avalon County, State and Federal Sustainability Goals and by reducing emissions and specifically noise pollution. Service center for regular maintenance and repairs will be provided as well. There we go. Okay, so how would we operate? We would have a brick-and-mortar store location where we would have two models of our E V golf carts on display for the public to be able to come in and actually put their hands on one of the vehicles before purchasing. We also, in our brick-and-mortar location, could also set up the scheduling for people that would like to rent it for the half or full day. We're definitely looking at doing this as a concierge-type service. So we'll be able to deliver the vehicles to the customer at a predetermined location. We have a warehouse on Pebbley Beach Road, which would act as our storage facility for those golf carts. That's where they'll be taken to each and every day. Our hours of operation, we'd be looking at doing eight A, eight A M to six P M. Six P M is the time that we would be taking them back to our warehouse where we could then recharge and clean and prepare for the next day. Residential E V cart purchase will include that removal and disposal of those gas-powered vehicles off the island. So to summarize our discussion or presentation, what we're looking for is we're seeking the city's approval to own and operate an E V golf cart rental, sales and service business, which aligns with the City of Avalon's federal, county and state plans and goals for more sustainable planet. The electric golf carts help reduce use of gas-powered vehicles and noise pollution within our town, improves public transportation, increases access to people with disabilities and will create a cleaner and more beautiful Avalon. At this time, we'd like to answer any of your questions that you may have.
One of my questions and a little bit of a concern would be how you're storing the batteries? And also if you're selling the golf carts, how are you recommending that the person that purchased it can charge their car if they don't?
The manufacturer of Icon does have recommendations as far as storing and charging. I think what I hear you're saying is you're concerned about not only the charging, but maybe the safety of the batteries. So a couple of safety features featured on our golf carts. When a person plugs them in to charge, they do have a safety mechanism which automatically shuts it off at one hundred percent. They do not go into this overcharging mode. The other recommendation which we will teach our residents when they buy our golf carts is that they really don't want them charging overnight. They want you to charge it up and then unplug. It's not something that we want you leaving plugged in all the time. I have also, just so the City Council knows, I've already had a meeting with Chief Algoria and we have discussed fire safety prevention and protocols. So I'm in alignment with Avalon Fire on this.
And it's, it's one-ten, right?
Yes.
It's 110, just like plugging in your hair dryer?
Yes.
Not like plugging in your dryer, clothes dryer?
We do invite for any, for any city council member or mayor, if you've not seen our golf carts, we do have them out front, and we would be happy to show them to you.
I saw something from Rosio today that she got from the DMV. Did you see what she got from the DMV about the sizes? First of all, these are, we'll talk about that neighborhood, you know, whatever, whatever. But supposedly, our 130 inches doesn't go into effect until January, I think she said.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
So that's one little tidbit. You know, when you're talking about when would you open up? They wouldn't, they wouldn't be...
But we can't allow somebody to bring something that doesn't fit.
I mean, well, if they just want to store it there forever, yeah.
But these are 134.
I know. So can you speak to that?
A couple of things. There is, I believe, and I'll have to look it up specifically, but I believe we have an exception, an extension availability for electric vehicles on the 130 that goes up to 1...
138 inches. If the DMV certifies the vehicles as a low-speed vehicle, an LSV, or an NEV, those are the two designations that are in our municipal code.
We've advised applicants. Applicants responded that these are designated in other places in California as LSVs, low-speed vehicles.
But do we want to see that just?
We need to verify that.
Exactly, yeah.
They are, they are a possibility.
And they wouldn't be able to be registered in the state of California, which they are.
Yeah.
To answer your other question on that, on the length too, the data sheet that I provided you was on a six-seater, and it does, it's 134, so it is under your requirement for a low-speed vehicle. And then that would, that's only one model of our carts.
Right.
Our other ones are obviously not that long.
And in regards to the rental side, we're seeking the 20 carts, two of which would be the utility carts, but we would like to have four-seater carts as a percentage, so be a 50/50. So just to be able to have smaller groups, be able to take the smaller vehicles.
So they went all 20, wouldn't be six-seaters?
Correct.
That's correct.
Well, I personally love the idea of sales and service. I'm a little concerned just because of the last time that we talked about vehicles and lengths and stuff like that, we were concerned, and now they're getting longer and longer. So if we could do the sales thing on the side of four-seaters rather than six, however, and I'm really, really sorry, I know you guys are great people, and it's a nice idea, it's a great idea, but I really am not in line with the rentals, the daily rentals. I think we have enough rental golf carts out there with people that think they're toys and, you know...
If I may respond to that, as the shoreboat owner, we pull in about 88,000 riders a year. I am asked on a daily basis for golf carts that can be rented for the full day. And we know it's happening in this town illegally, where private residents are renting out their golf carts, which that needs to stop. It's illegal, and the city is not generating any revenue from that.
Agreed.
That's why we're...
And I constantly get, can you get it for more than one, two hours? And it's like, no, there's no long term. And I do get a lot of people who are elderly, who would like to get something just to go out to the Snazza Beach or out to Pebly or...
That we have coming, that could help. I just, I sincerely...
And I have that issue too of adding more vehicles on the street. And in talking to them on Saturday, yesterday, Sunday, I told them one of my big complaints with rental golf carts right now is to go to the market and to see 10, 15 rental golf carts parked at the market and people going to do their grocery shopping at the market or going to the post office or just doing their, and they have parked their rental golf cart. I look at it like, why are you wasting that money to park it? Because I was always told when I first moved to the island that the golf carts were a self-guided tour, and if it's a self-guided tour, then it should be moving, not stagnant. So it's just one of my big bugaboo's in that.
Well, this is also why we are requesting a smaller number. So in essence, you have, the utility carts are going to be utilized for moving product and people moving to their homes, things like that. So in essence, we're talking about 18 rental golf carts. The city needs a partner to be able to move forward with the green movement of electrical carts. And it's going to be very difficult to find a partner to come in and be able to support the whole transition. It's going to take time. And so there's going to be your early adopters that are going to come into play, but this is going to take a long time for it to go ahead and, you know, when we start talking about getting charging stations and so forth around the town. So the rental side of the business is what will help keep a owner above and beyond everything, be able to pay rent and employees and so forth, so...
I want to agree that we, that's the road that we want to take, and that's definitely in our general plan. And I appreciate you, that's the golf cart you guys are choosing, sorry about that. But for me personally, right now at the moment, I can't agree with 20 more golf carts, electric or not, unfortunately, because I do love that, that's what it provides, that's what we need, that's the way we're supposed to be moving forward. But we just, we've been doing studies to get people to walk more, we're getting signs to walk more, and I just feel like we're contradicting all that. And so for me at the moment, I can't agree with the rentals. Would I love to partner with you guys and maybe do an incentive program to switch out the golf carts I need to get off? That's a different story. But obviously, the logistics on that, I would love to see more cables, charging, because that's something we have to look into anyways. But when it comes to the rentals, for me, it's just a no right now.
Well, if I can respond to that.
Absolutely.
So if you look at the current golf cart suppliers, the rental companies right now, they do a great job, but they are inundated. And so what's happening is, is someone will rent a golf cart for one hour or two hours, they come back in, and there's a line going down the road waiting.
No, I'm sure we need it. I'm sure there's some sort of service, but the 20 plus what we already have, it's just not going to work out right now.
I have a question. Without the rentals, would you not do the sales?
Correct.
Well, that's a bummer.
Well, it's just part of...
It's the model that wouldn't support itself, yeah.
But Avalon, you now know Icon, so I'm sure you can get one online. Yeah, I don't know.
Is there an idea of considering then a smaller number? That would satisfy your question? There needs to be a rental aspect to be able to sustain the business.
I, I'm sorry, I'm holding steadfast. I am completely opposed to any more vehicles in this town.
If I can remind everybody of the conversation that was had about a year and a half, two years ago, when the electric bikes came in, and we did add a lot more electric bikes as well, so we are...
I didn't want to bring that up, but yeah.
You know, the only other comment that I have as well to this, is that when we have the one-hourly rentals, those people are driving them for the one hour because they want to get the most of their money. When we are catering to weddings, corporate events, and you've got the golf cart for eight hours, you're not driving for eight hours. They're not on what I have.
There's not that much to see. It's going to be parked somewhere, which parking is a problem.
Well, it gives them the ability to go up to the...
It's a mobility...
Botanical gardens and...
Yeah, and we are based on tourism.
Right.
Can we ask any more questions?
I really would like to see the city go, the community go...
Me too, that's why I'm a little bummed out.
Go green and...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's, I'm sure, I'm not, none of you are in agreement with some kind of a lesser number. I know, I know already when this was on the agenda, people already came up and said, well, we want more, we want more, you know, or we're going to do that. I don't know if there's some small number that gets the visibility out there, same time as works into your model. Because my biggest complaint is the noise and the smells of the golf carts that I get from all the visitors. People say, I'm not coming back until you get rid of all these gas-powered vehicles. And I hate to say, we're not there yet, that's, you know, because we have to move along with this, because this is, we're behind the eight ball when it comes to electric. And I did like when I was chatting with them, their willingness to really get into the weeds with this and kind of make it happen and work as partners. I really appreciate that. I'm not hearing very good news from these guys, but I didn't know if there was just some kind of a smaller number. Because number one, I love that little truck out there.
Yeah, the moving truck is a great idea.
And I would like to think, number one, if they could maybe have that, if it really is good for, if local people will use it. I mean, I know Jackson has been trying to get something to do, his electronics business. He came back with another one, and it still isn't the right size, but that fits into people like that's needs, you know, for our local businesses, and so they're not just running around in an old, beat-up golf cart, throwing all the crap on top of it to get from job to job. So I think I see a real benefit in that little pickup truck, even for the city as well. And maybe we could get rid of some of the stuff we have for something like that, because they don't seem to be that expensive, a lot less than a pickup truck. So I don't know if there's some little model of, you know, can we start with...
What do you guys still would be at least a break-even, some profitable number-wise?
Based on our model, if we had 10 carts, it was two, two or one of the truck style, so it'd be 11 total. If I can also too just add a comment, I don't know if anybody's purchased a golf cart recently to see how long the backlog is. So there's a backlog that is 12 to 14 months on some carts. And specifically, if we're wanting to go electric, it's got to be, if, even if everyone went and bought an Icon, who's going to be your service center? No one's going to set up a service center just to, you know, have carts not sold through them. So I think it definitely is a partnership with the city, and, but it is going to entail some additional room for us to be able to make some money.
I just see that Scott gave a question.
Okay.
I just want to refer people to the municipal code. So there's four factors that you look at. One is, is there a need for this? They've demonstrated that there is a need for the tourist. The other factors, though, are, would granting this application have a deleterious impact on public health, safety, and welfare? Would this increase traffic or parking congestion, traffic safety, noise, air pollution? And could this be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to the public safety and welfare? Council seems to be focusing in on the fact that there's a lot of traffic already, and there's congestion already, and so that's where they are focusing in on the issue. It's not, it's not the noise, it's the fact that we already have a number of golf carts, and there is congestion and traffic in the city.
And I just want to remind council, if there's anybody that wants to come and anybody else out there before council acts.
Oh, of course, of course. All righty, and I think somebody's getting ready to stand up. Thanks, well, a couple people.
I just want to make the comment that we are going electric. We have a few cars already trying here. We have 10 more coming sometime, I would say, March, April next year. Right now, the problem that we have is the charging facilities. So eventually, we'll go electric. We're also working with Easy Golf, we have a dealership here.
I'm sorry?
We're also working with Easy Golf, Golf Cart, so we can sell electric cars hopefully next year.
So you can sell them? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Well, you want to go in partnership and sell Icons?
Can I ask a question?
We can talk, we may not sell too easy go.
What do you do with your old golf carts?
What's that?
What do you do with your old golf carts?
I'm sorry, Michael.
What do you do with your old golf carts?
Ship them to the mainland, okay.
Yeah, they're not allowed to resell.
Any other questions?
Not right now, thank you. Marky Mark?
Good evening. I normally wouldn't come up here, but this microphone system is so lousy, we can't hear anything at home, the volume all the way, but that's not the point why I'm here. I've done, I'm 330 Clarissa, property owner, past business owner, vehicle hearing board, planning commission. Number one, the code has to be rewritten for electric extension cords across sidewalks. That's the first thing. Number two, these are not true electric cars, because the electric is charged with fossil fuel. We have so many instances back east, and even on Clarissa here, where we had a fire. We have too much traffic, we've got a mess out there, and everything, every time somebody comes up here, they feign a necessity. This is a financial business for them. So they're going to want to push that and not think about us. It's time that we forget about other people coming in and take care of ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for your comments. Anybody in the back of the room want to talk? Okay, oh, come on.
With our rental cars, we do do them by the day, just to put that out. We have no qualms of doing that.
Doing what?
Renting the golf carts by the day.
Oh, okay.
I didn't like how they said rental cars aren't rented by the day. We provide services for that, weddings, groups, activities. We have no problem doing that.
Are you, excuse me, come back, come back, Ryan. I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Ryan. What about Whittaker's going electric at some point? Is that in your business plan at all?
If it has to happen, yes, we will.
Okay, okay.
I'd recommend it.
Well, what is the state law that we have to electrify by? When did you say, Todd?
2030.
I don't know that one, so, but if we have to, we're going to.
By 2030?
2030, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going to comply.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But just any new commercial autolet in Avalon we passed last year, starting January 1st, 2024, commercial autolets have to be electric.
Are these considered commercial?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, golf cart rentals, yeah.
But aren't, don't some of them have other stickers other than commercial stickers on them?
Some of them have blue stickers, it says.
They might, but they're being used for commercial purposes.
And so they have to, they have to comply with all the commercial autolet stickers, regulations, off-street parking, all that stuff.
Right.
Even though it's a blue sticker, because I, that's what the staff reports.
So you're saying any replacement?
Any replacement after January 1, 2024.
Okay, so, has to be electric. Okay, well, team? Is there a motion? Is it going to die because of no comment or no action? Is there any reason to bring it back?
I don't think so. I'll make a motion to deny the consideration for the permit for the vehicle rental.
As it stands right here?
As it stands right here.
Or forever? Or forever, I guess?
Yeah, I guess I don't know how to make that motion. How do I do that?
You can't tie it forever. So you can deny this one, and I think they, municipal code says, I think after six months, they can come back. Or you've in the path of denied it without prejudice for them to come back with a revised application. So you can deny it, or, which I think it's six months, they can come back, or you can set a shorter period.
I'm going to second Mary's motion.
And I guess I just want to make a statement that I wish there was another kind of, something that could be done if you went back again, if you said... Again, if he says you can come back in six months, we don't, we also, we don't have a full council, I have no idea. But it might be interesting to see, again, I love the pickup trucks. I think those are, would be necess-, could be necessary here. And again, my biggest complaint is the electric, and I'm disappointed that the other people, the other people that have been doing golf cart rentals for all these years are just finally, well, one of y'all is trying to get on the bandwagon a little bit with three or four, and I know there's still problems, but this just brings me to mind that we need electric vehicles and we need them sooner than later. So go ahead, Michael.
Would you guys want to table it for a while?
Certainly, we always want to work with the city.
Because I'd rather us table it and continue to look into it than doing a denial right now.
Okay.
Because I, because I, because I'm like this. Because we always sit here and we talk about people who aren't getting the vehicle they need because it's their business. And we're always worried about that person not being able to do their business. But yet, we don't want people to do business, and we don't want people competing against other people for business. And our position is, we need to make it fair and equitable for everybody to do business. So I would rather us table it and discuss it more.
But there's been a motion and a second? So we have to move on the motion and the second first?
You have to vote on that first, and then if that fails, you can, someone can make a substitute motion. It needs three votes to pass.
Well, then I'll say no.
Wait, we have that, you have to call for that.
Oh, well, call for the vote, I'm, oh, she did, dang, all righty.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Protan Ponse?
No.
Mayor Marshall?
No. Okay.
Two ayes, two noes, one absent, Mayor, Councilmember Laval?
Okay. All right.
So what does that mean?
Sorry, can we table it?
It's tabled.
And see if we can count to a... Yeah.
All right, thank you all very much.
Sorry to be the bad guy.
What?
Sorry to be the bad guy.
No, you're not, you're not, no, you all have concerns about congestion and all of that and parking and all of that, so I, so I think that we're doing the right thing. So I want to know...
Wait, we're...
Oh, I'm sorry.
The meeting's still going, so.
Is it?
You haven't adjourned?
You have not adjourned it yet, Mayor.
Well, no, can I talk about something though?
Well, I think you better, yeah.
Okay, no, this is just something, I was in, I was in, well, I was in there, I see this little map. Did you make this, Jocelyn? This little city map on bicycles and everything?
No, that was pretty, Devin made that, we've had that out about a year.
Yeah, I just saw that, but, you know, it says bicyclists must obey all city and state bike laws, and no bikes are to be ridden after sunset. Is that a choose, there goes Matt. No bikes are to be ridden out after sunset, what, without lights or something? Yeah, and the rental bikes probably don't have lights, so that's maybe, okay, anyway. I found this interesting, and I think these are the kinds of things we could at least be putting into the kids' hands because because more needs to be done to educate these children, that's all.
Sure.
We'll get those to Sheriff.
Yeah. All right, if there's no further business, meeting adjourned.